Looks like we're ready to.
Twenty seconds.
I now call the August 1st, 2017, regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at 7:00 PM. Would Councilmember Godey lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? And after that, Councilmember Larson will offer an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our eternal heavenly Father, we are thankful for the opportunity to serve the city of Riverton, thankful for the right to assemble, the freedom which Thou hast blessed us with. Thank, Father, bless us that we might have the best interests of Riverton City at hand, that Thou might help us with all decisions, that they might benefit Riverton and its constituents. Father, we say this in the name of Thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Would the City Clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Lance Godey.
Present.
Councilman Tim Hancock.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Gibbon.
Here.
Mayor John Baker.
I am present and declare that we have quorum this evening. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Your Honor, make a motion to approve the agenda as written. Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Communications from the floor, citizens' comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Consent agenda. Would the City Clerk please read the consent agenda items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Approval of the minutes, July 6th, 2017, special council meeting. Approval of the minutes, July 6th, 2017, executive session. Approval of the minutes, July 18th, 2017, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes, July 18th, 2017, executive session. Approval of the minutes, August 1st, 2017, finance committee meeting. Approval of the finance committee recommendations for August 1st, 2017.
Thank you. Are there any items requiring further discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Finance committee recommendations for approval of claims to be paid in the amount of $299,774.97. Manual checks in the amount of $26,799.94. And payroll and liability for 7/21/17 in the amount of $458,420... $20.77 for a total of $784,955.68.
Chair would entertain a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion?
Your Honor, on item 11, I want to not be counted here.
Oh, when do we get to that?
Obstain.
You can say that. Okay, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. The next item is the oath of office for Chief of Police Eric Murphy.
I have made him cry. I'm sorry. Your Honor and council, it's my sincere privilege and honor to appoint Eric Murphy as Chief of Police. I've known Eric off and on for the last 10 years, but we've never had the opportunity to work together like we have the last five months. When I came into this position, the idea was that we would not fill that position until a permanent city administrator had been appointed. Well, here we are, starting six months. Interim positions can be very, very difficult on a department, a division, our city as a whole, and the organization, mainly because of the leadership. We can't have leadership that waivers. And we can't have leadership that depends on one thing one month and something the next month. And so, after much collaboration with the mayor, we decided that the best interest for the city of Riverton would be to appoint Eric Murphy as Chief of Police. Not that we didn't have other qualified candidates, we had two other, two other ones when it came to that interim appointment, and he still stood out. I would like to get a little personal. In my 10 years of working in a different position, I can tell you that there was a definite barrier between police and administration. That is leadership. The first thing I asked Eric to do, Eric to do, when he became interim, let's work together on managing that barrier. Let's break down the barrier, whatever it is. Let's figure it out and break it down. Well, there were perceptions on both sides of the hall. This wasn't a border. It was simply a hall. And so, we worked together to try to determine what those were. We worked it out. I feel that we accomplished something. We've had meetings with dispatchers. We'd have meetings with other employees and police individuals. I've seen more police on this side of the hall in five months than I did in 10 years. That's what Eric Murphy has brought to the city of Riverton. So, it wasn't hard to make that decision for the city of Riverton. Eric brings 19 years of law enforcement with him. He brings leadership and management. He attended the National Academy with the FBI. Less than 1% of officers, law enforcement officers, get in that program. We were fortunate enough to have two in the city of Riverton's history to be involved in that program. It's a 10-week program on leadership and management. We had Todd Byerly and Eric Murphy. So, Eric, without further ado, Mayor, I'd like to invite you down to present the oath of office to Eric. Congratulations.
Thank you. I couldn't do with that. He's the most nervous I've ever been, so I apologize if I stutter.
I'll give you your own copy so you can read it, okay? You don't have to try to repeat after me, okay? Raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear or affirm.
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
The Constitution of the State of Wyoming.
That I have not knowingly violated any law.
That I have not knowingly violated any law.
Related to my election or appointment.
Related to my election or appointment.
Or caused it to be done by others.
Or caused it to be done by others.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity. Thank you.
Okay. And you can put your name on there.
This makes it official?
Make it official.
No extra pay though, right, Mayor?
Right.
Thank you.
So, no offense, but I will come shake your hand. I have to go give my wife a hug first. Congratulations.
Thanks, folks. This is really, this is really spectacular to have so many people come and support Chief Murphy. I know he's fondly viewed in our community, and we're thankful to have him work for us and be part of our leadership team here for the city.
Thank you.
The fun's just starting. You ain't gotta go home.
Reggie scared everybody away.
Thank you.
Scared everybody away, Reggie.
I did.
They're scared of the fireworks.
But you're gonna be gone.
No, just, we'll see if we need you, okay?
Sounds good.
All right? Okay. Fireworks permit application, Riverton High Schools. Could we have the City Clerk's report, please?
Yes, Your Honor, the City Clerk's office has received an application for fireworks permit from Reggie Miller with the Fremont County School District Number 25. This permit is for football games for the cannon to be shot at the events on August 25th, September 15th, September 29th, October 6th, October 27th, and November 3rd. The fire chief has submitted a letter of recommendation, and he, Mr. Miller, is in the audience for public attendance, and staff is recommending approval of the application.
The Chair would entertain a motion to open public hearing.
So moved.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak?
Your Honor, seeing as nobody's come forward, I recommend we close the public hearing.
Second. Moved in seconded that we close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing to be closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the fireworks permit application.
So moved.
Second. Been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, I just saw here in the letter from Chief Higgs, just concerned wanting to make sure a fire extinguisher on site in case there's an issue, and wanted to have a fire truck there. That's all stuff that you guys are typically doing, and.
We normally don't have a fire truck per se, but we do have extinguishers.
Okay.
Your Honor, is this, we're still firing a cannon? We're not using rockets or any type?
It's just the cannon.
Just, just.
No fireworks, no, no flares, no fountains, no.
No.
Pyrotechnics, just a cannon.
Is it still Doc?
Just a cannon. What?
Is it still Doc?
Yes.
Yeah, he's been doing it forever, so he's just got it figured out by now.
You know, I don't know.
Hopefully, we get to hear him a lot.
There's more discussion than I expected. Maybe Reggie, maybe you ought to come up here to the podium and, and at least tell us who you are, so that the audience at home can, can, can see.
Great. So, I'm Reggie Miller. I'm the Assistant Principal and Activities Director at Riverton High School. We make this request because Doc Holloway about three years ago, four years ago, came to us and wanted to fire the cannon at our games anytime we had a scoring play, whether it was a touchdown, field goal, something like that, or something to celebrate. At the end of the game, when we win, he also fires it off. He's been doing it for years and years, takes all the precautionary measures. We have him off to the side where we have it gated off, where no fans, community members can get near it, because it is loud, and there is a little bit of a fire and the smoke that comes out. So, we do take those safety precautions. No cannonballs involved. It's just the power.
No cannonballs involved. Okay, great. Thank you.
Glad to hear that. I live near there, so I was worried about the cannonball.
Yeah. If not, we'll point it towards one of the parking lot behind the high school. We'll do that for you.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Public hearing and first reading of ordinance 17-015 yard sales. Community Development Director's report, please.
Number 11. No.
Oh, did we skip? Oh, I'm sorry. I got, I got hung up. I got hung up. Let's, let's talk about the replat of lots 5 and 6, Block 15, Woodridge Estates. That's Community Development Director's report as well.
Yes, Your Honor. This is a request to replat lots 5 and 6 of Block 15 of Woodridge Estates subdivision. This property is located south of Forest Drive and east of North 16th East, and both of the lots do have common ownership. And Lot 5 is addressed at 1007 North 16th Street East. There is an existing house on Lot 5, but Lot 6 is vacant. The petitioners, Kyle and Nancy Larson, wish to eliminate the line between the two lots to create one lot in order to have a larger lot on which to build a garage. Since there is an existing easement between the lots, a replat was, a replat was required in order to meet the setbacks and remove that easement. There are utility drainage and irrigation easements existing on the northwest and south sides of what will be Lot 5A. On the east side, on the original plat, there is a 10-foot utility drainage and irrigation easement. On this replat, it is proposed to reduce that to 5 foot from the 10 feet while cutting the northeast corner to accommodate existing utilities in that easement. This proposed layout has been approved by the utility companies that have their utilities in that easement. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this replat unanimously on July 20th.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion? Your Honor, I would move that we approve the replat of lots 5 and 6, Block 15, Woodridge Estates.
Second.
Moved in seconded. Discussion?
Your Honor, obviously, I won't be voting.
Okay.
But I might say that it's taken me since January to get at this place. And not because of our department.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. Okay. Public hearing and first reading on ordinance 17-015 yard sales. Community Development Director's report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. At this time, we don't have an ordinance that regulates the number of garage sales that a resident can have during a year. And where this can kind of turn into a business in a residential area and cause problems within the neighborhood, we decided we needed to do something a little bit about that. We have received complaints in the past, and some more recently, regarding perpetual garage sales that have been taking place either on a weekly or even on a daily basis in some residential areas. Other than approved home occupations within existing buildings, we would like to be able to minimize business uses in residential area and keep their residential areas more intact for residential use. With some council direction, we have included the new regulations in the Home Occupation section of the Riverton Municipal, Municipal Code. This is also the section where we found these regulations in other municipalities. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this ordinance unanimously on July 20th. And the ordinance is fairly simple. We added a section under Garage, Yard, Estate, Moving Sales and Signs, which basically limits the sales to three sales per calendar year and for not more than three consecutive days each. Garage and yard sale signs are allowed in residential zoning districts and can be posted on private property provided they are removed immediately upon completion of the sale or within 72 hours. And then, as a reminder also, it is, shall be unlawful to post garage or yard sale signs or other sale signs in city parks, on streetlight poles, traffic light poles, utility poles, street signs, sidewalks, fences, or trees in any city or state right-of-way. If people would like to put their signs up, they can put it on private property with private property as consent to do that. And that's what that ordinance entails.
Thank you. Would the City Clerk please read ordinance 17-015 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor. Proposed ordinance number 17-015 on first reading, and ordinance amending Title 17, zoning, Chapter 17.20, accessory use, Section 17.20.040, home occupation, adding 17.20.040A11, and adding Section 17.20.050, garage, yard sales, and signs of the Riverton Municipal Code, and repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye. I now declare the public hearing to be open. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes and other applicable laws, and I would ask those individuals wishing to address the council to approach the podium and identify yourselves for the record. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this issue?
Your Honor, seeing as somebody's come forward, I recommend we close the public hearing.
Second. Been moved in second that we close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mayor votes aye, or any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and I now declare the public hearing to be closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve ordinance 17-015. Your Honor, I would move that we approve ordinance number 17-015 on first reading.
Second.
Been moved in seconded. Is there any discussion? Mr. Hancock.
Your Honor, I, I was just looking at this, and I, and when we were discussing this beforehand, one of the things we had said is that basically what we're wanting to do is address what is perceived as an issue that's been brought up at least with perpetual garage sales, for lack of a better word, but people continuing to have garage sales on a regular basis in residential areas in particular. And I was just noticing that in A, we don't specify that this is only in residential areas. All we have is they're limited to three sales per calendar year, not more than three consecutive days each. And in our discussion before, I thought we were specifically wanting to have this be limiting residential zoned areas and not just anyone. So, I guess I would think we would maybe want to consider adding some language there to have this specifically be in zones that are, in areas that are zoned residential.
Mr. Green?
Well, Your Honor, all the other zones that wouldn't be residential are commercial or industrial, and I think in their definitions, they allow business activity, and so a garage sale would be approved. I guess, without finding the ordinance specifically myself. I mean, all the other zones are considered commercial and business, so I don't know if we need to be that specific.
Your Honor, this is under home occupations, the home occupation section, so we felt that that was sufficient. There, there is one other change that we probably do need to make that we missed in Section 1, where we did add a statement that said a garage sale that does not exceed three consecutive days or a total of three days. We put "in a 90-day period shall not be considered a home occupation." We really need to say "in a year" and change that verbiage on that one. That was just put in the body of home occupations, just to clarify home occupations.
Oh, I see. So, you're saying the Section 1, the 17 dot 20 dot 040A11, needs to actually correspond with Section 2, which has per calendar year?
Your Honor, yes, that's correct.
Mr. Godey?
Your Honor, I guess I'm either late to the, to the event here or something, but I guess I'm trying to understand why 3, maybe some understanding of where 3 came from. Is that a standard in other cities across the state? So, give us, maybe give us some perspective of, of where some of these numbers have come from?
Your Honor, that is exactly where we got this information, was from other municipalities. That's approximately what they recommended. We originally had talked about 3, I don't know, one time we even talked about 2 yard sales, but we went with what we found in some other municipalities, went with 3 yard sales in a calendar year. And we were talking 2 consecutive days, but then I know a lot of people will start on a Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so we changed that then to be a little more lenient and put 3 consecutive days.
Would you say it is, is the average, or are there some higher, some, or is that tip, the most typical by? the most typical by far, is that three days a year is the standard in other Wyoming municipalities?
Your Honor, in the ones that we checked, that was probably the average. That was more the standard.
Your Honor, I'm not sure. 3, just having had a few yard sales over the years, I'm just, I've struggled with 3. And I'm -- I know some of the negative publicity related to this lately has been focused mostly on that, not so much on the littering or the signage or things like that. I think most people realize that they should, they should, they don't necessarily do it, but they should pick up their signs or their boxes or whatever. But three days a year, if you have one yard sale on a Saturday or a Sunday, you've blown 2/3 of your limit in one year. As I, am I not? Three days a year?
Only one. But you can do up to three days, as the count is one.
Three day, oh, so you're talking...
But you can do up to nine days if you want to, correct?
Nine individual days.
But if you do Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, that counts as one yard sale, right?
No, no, no. Friday, Saturday, Sunday, three.
But the way this...
Now you got us all confused up.
The way this is worded is three sales per calendar year. So you're saying that a sale would be no more than three consecutive days each. So a sale itself could have up to three consecutive days.
So that's a total of nine days.
Nine days in a year.
That's what I just said, and you said no. I made you correct it. So is nine days enough?
Why don't we say that? Why, I mean, I'm, why do I have to do the math in order to figure out? I mean, why can't we just say a maximum of nine days per year?
That's different than having nine one-day garage sales.
But if the point is to minimize extended garage sales, if I had a sale nine days in a row, and that was it, I've reached my limit. I could do nine Saturdays in a row, and I've reached my limit. I mean, I guess I see the other point, but I'm not sure we're complicating this if it's that we have to interpret for people that, well, what we really mean is a sale is a combination of three days, and then you're having to explain. Simple seems better. This seems more complicated than it has to be.
Your Honor. Mike?
I guess the thought process was, we're trying to protect against people just having, continually having garage sales, and I think you could throw the, if they're going to have it nine Saturdays in a row, that's pretty continuous, as opposed to having three weekends or three-day events during the year, which again, mostly is the summertime, of course, in Wyoming. So there's, let's say, four months, that's three sales in four months. That's what an average family could be expected to do, which is a reasonable act in a residential district, as opposed to somebody who is making money from creating garage sales and having them on a continuous basis, I guess was our original thought process. And I think whether we do three three-day events or four three-day events is probably not a huge deal, but the secret is we don't want to have somebody that's continually got stuff out in their yard for sale and not have a way to limit that, because that's really a business activity, which should go in in a business zoned area.
Totally agree.
I think you could probably get some clarity if you had garage, yard, estate, moving sales are limited to three sales per calendar year, period. Each sale may not last longer than three consecutive days. That could clarify it a little bit, because then you're saying you've got three sales, each one can't last any longer than three consecutive days. And I'm looking at this also, and I see what you're saying about it being in the accessory uses, but, and I'm looking at the code here, if you look at 17.20, that's all accessory uses, and then it specifies as accessory uses in residence districts, that's O1O, signs, O2O, accessory building in use, O3O, home occupation, O4O. So it's under that, but I still think it would be wise to clarify that this is in residential areas only. And the reason I say that is even though you could say, well, of course, it's clear that you can have sales in a commercial area, I think when you look at the way you read ordinances, you usually would read them in the most stringent way possible. So someone could read this to mean that we're limiting what could happen in a commercial area. So I still think that it would make sense to clarify in this, to say garage, yard, estate, moving sales in residential areas are limited to three sales per calendar year, period. Each sale may last no longer than three consecutive days. And that would be the way I would think it would make sense to word it for 17.20.050A.
So is that an amendment?
I'd move we amend it.
Second, and I would agree to that amendment.
And I think that speaks to my issue as well. It clarifies, yeah.
Okay, so do you have that amendment? Or do we need to?
I got it.
You got it?
Got it.
All right. Is there any further discussion on this amendment?
Your Honor, could I have clarification on one word?
Yes.
May versus shall.
I agree.
Okay.
You need a shall.
Thank you.
We shall.
Okay. All right, so we've got this amendment. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it's amended. So now we're back to the original motion. The idea, let me make a comment here. There may be confusion about this. Zoning is designed to keep certain kinds of activities gathered together. And so in a residential area, that's where people live, and we don't want to turn that into a business area. So that the reason that you bought a home in that subdivision that has that zoning on it, you can be relatively assured that tomorrow morning you won't wake up and discover that somebody's going to put in a gas station next door to your house. And even if there was a home, you know, certainly a person could hang out his shingle and say that he's a mechanic, and he's going to bring in work, and so then he goes to his regular job during the daytime, and then at night, he's out there in the garage welding and banging away and that kind of stuff until the wee hours of the morning, so that then you have that disturbance activity associated with that. Or you might have some kind of a business that had a constant stream of traffic coming to that address all day long, which caused a lot of traffic on the, on a street in a residential area, which is typically more narrow, windy, whatever, harder to get through, and so you've got traffic congestion that was not anticipated when you had a business, when it was just going to be a residential area. Gradually, what we see happen in a community is that the zoning changes as it moves from one area to another, and so you see some places where the commercial has crept out into the, into the other area, and so then, but it's usually one lot at a time, or maybe a block at a time, goes from residential to commercial, and that's a gradual pattern that allows a community to evolve. But the idea is, is to try to do this in some kind of an orderly fashion, and so that's the purpose of this. Well, so here is a garage sale, and if that turned out to be something that operates five days a week, seven days a week, that definitely changes the character of that street in a permanent way. And so then that violates that concept of residential zoning, and so that's what we're trying to deal with here. And yet, we want to be able, a person has his home there, and he should be able to clear out his garage and get rid of some junk, as long as he doesn't make a habit of it. And so that's, we're trying to make an exception here, so that it's clear that that's a legal activity, garage sales are a legal activity, and you can do it so many times a year, and yet we don't want to change the character of a neighborhood to where it's a, basically a retail business in a residential neighborhood. That needs to be in a commercial zone, and so those folks could rent property in a commercially zoned area to do the same thing, have their own store.
Your Honor, I wanted to also make a motion to amend Section 1. This is what Ms. Lures had noted, that it reads a garage sale that doesn't exceed three consecutive days or a total of three days in a 90-day period. I'd move to amend that to read in a per calendar year, so it would be, or a total of three days per calendar year shall not be considered a home occupation.
Second. Moving seconded. Any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It's been amended. Now we're back on the regular motion. Mr. Godey?
Just one last point, and I just want to make sure, I think the complaints that I have heard, and I've heard a few complaints about this, is there was a misunderstanding about the total number of days. And so that's really where I was coming from in making sure, and I would maybe ask the press or whomever is just to clearly indicate what the maximum number of days, clearly define and understand that the difference between sales and days, and so it's still a little complicated, but theoretically, a person could have, if I can clarify, three three-day sales through a year, so a total of nine days. But they could not have nine consecutive days, because they can only have a maximum of three days consecutively. Correct?
That's right.
That's what I, I'm...
Or nine individual days could not be allowed.
Correct, or nine individual days, correct. So it's some weird math, but I...
All right, so as we, as we work our way through this, the three readings on this, okay, maybe we'll get some feedback that will help us write that in a way that is more understandable or easier to deal with, okay? It makes sense to me, but if, okay, so we invite comment. All right?
Well, it's like our chicken.
Our chicken thing.
Yeah, 12.
12.
Or six ducks, or six chickens, but none of them being roosters.
Why do we, why do we do this to ourselves?
It's fun.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, and the motion passes on first reading.
We need to have a roll call vote for this.
No, just on third.
Good.
Okay?
Just making sure.
All right. Okay, consideration of the Wind River Visitors Council budget for fiscal year 1718. At our special meeting on June the 13th of 2017, the proposed budget plan for the Wind River Visitors Council was postponed, and up for approval is the final 2017-2018 budget plan of the Wind River Visitors Council. And so the Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the budget for the Wind River Visitors Council.
Your Honor, I would move that we approve the Wind River Visitor Council budget.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Thanks for coming, Paul. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Clips update presentation, Public Works Director and Chief of Police.
Your Honor, I wanted to make sure that we expressed our gratitude to individuals that have worked very hard on behalf of the City of Riverton in the last nine months, trying to make sure that we are covered from an operations standpoint, law enforcement standpoint, communications, and hospitality. So I would like to extend our sincere gratitude to Councilman Sean Peterson. This isn't his full-time job. This is his part-time job, and he's done a wonderful job trying to balance that with all the meetings and all the information that had to go out to the public and to work with all the committees. So thank you, Councilman Peterson. We appreciate that. And just as much should go to Kyle Butterfield. Kyle has been the major point of contact, and I didn't want to spend a lot of my time or a lot of his time being redundant, so he has taken on the lead of that for the City of Riverton in addition to his daily responsibilities and duties. So his plate got a little bit bigger, and granted, it's his job to take on other duties as assigned, but he has spent, he has spent an exorbitant amount of time, in other words, he has exceeded a lot of time that people thought we would need to plan an event like this. And we did plan it. We asked the sun to meet the moon, and some come together as one, and they delightfully accepted. So sincere appreciation and gratitude to you, Kyle. We are two weeks and six days away from the eclipse. So this presentation is not only to help you as elected officials, reach out to your constituents, but also to have answers. We also put an ad in the paper to make sure that our citizens knew that we were doing this presentation. If they had any questions, maybe they'd like to tune in tonight, and I hope they do. For the first time since 1918, a solar eclipse is coming to Wyoming, the state of Wyoming, and it will span more than 365 miles. I've taken a few tidbits just because I wanted to be involved to some extent, so I have a few tidbits that I'd like to share with our 10,615 ambassadors for the City of Riverton. Number one, plan ahead and plan your travel time. If you think that on this day or two days before, you can go from Smiths to City Hall in seven minutes, like I usually do, that's not going to happen. So what can, what can we do? Let's try to plan our time, even as citizens, and help our visitors by accommodating them with traffic congestion. Try to get to where you need to be early, carpool, ride a bicycle, scooter, whatever you need to do, but let's try to accommodate our visitors. Don't depend on cell phones. We're going to have to go back to some means that younger people have, I don't know, even know if they've opened up a map. I don't know. I grew up with a map. But we don't know if our cellphone reception is going to be dependable, because there's going to be so much use, so we would encourage you to try to stay off your cellphone as much as you can, again, to help accommodate our visitors and other agencies that need to use them. Again, traffic congestion, follow the rules when it comes to speed limits. Let's try to be cognizant. Let's try to be courteous as drivers and obey the laws. This is probably one of the most important ones. Gas up and buy your groceries ahead of time. We will have a lot of people that are frustrated because they're standing in line. We can't expect people that are traveling from Casper or from Bavaria, Germany, who we are getting Bavaria, Germany people here, or Canada, we found out, to pack their groceries and make sure they have enough gas. They might have to have enough gas to get from Jackson Hole to here. So make sure, again, as ambassadors, that we're planning ahead and treating our visitors nicely and putting them in front of the line. Of course, make sure you have your eclipse glasses. They're for sale in many, many businesses. The city did not, or decided not to do that. We didn't want to compete with our private businesses, but they're available in many businesses throughout Riverton. One thing I think that I would like to expand on is to encourage our citizens, our ambassadors, to practice patience, be positive, help whenever you can by giving good information. We'll have information booths, two information booths available in Riverton, and so get as much information as you can, again, to help with those lines that might be a little bit larger than we'd like to. Stay calm. Enjoy this great event. I look at this event as a celebration like I do Christmas or a birthday. It's not about the gifts. It's not about the food. It's really about people. So let's encourage our citizens to be good family, to be good people, and embrace the people that are coming to our community. Let's help them embrace the state of Wyoming and the City of Riverton, and go back to Bavaria, Germany, and say, you should go to Riverton, Wyoming. So with that, Chief Murphy, if you would like to begin the presentation with law enforcement and public safety, that would be great. and public safety, that would be great.
Your Honor, counsel. So myself and Kyle have been working on some presentations. We did one for the employees last two weeks ago, Thursday. It went over really well. We did a pretty much informal, just informative type of presentation, so we want to do that for you tonight. So on the law enforcement side, really, the plan is we're going to have 12-hour shifts. Everybody's working those four days. We're going to man different areas. And so, just in this example, Sergeant Amy Filer, she is a TACMed, so she will be in charge of the medical tent that will be out front. Scott Peters, he's a sergeant. He's our traffic guy. He knows a lot about traffic, has been to several NHTSA, and that's the National Highway Safety Traffic Association classes on traffic. Our biggest concern is traffic flow. As everybody knows, we don't know, the town of Riverton right now is about 10,000, 11,000 people, and we don't know if 5,000 more people are going to show up or 50,000 more people. And we are just concerned that our streets are not designed for that. So I can tell you from a police department standpoint, traffic flow is our biggest concern. I feel like my biggest nightmare that keeps me up at night is downtown being a parking lot, people getting frustrated, and just things going downhill from there. So what we've decided to do is, an officer will be assigned a, let's say, a two-block area, and they're going to be in that area watching traffic, making sure traffic flow is consistent, and then Sergeant Peters will kind of be in the area as a floater to kind of help out with those different areas. Another major concern for us is City Park, obviously, with the things going on there. We feel like that'll be a central hub. So we will actually have Sergeant Charlie Marshall will actually be in charge of the City Park area, and then we'll also have two or three different bike patrol officers in that area, and then Charlie and his wife will actually be on horse-mounted patrol so they can get around a little bit easier. Scott Comers and Pete McCall will be on bikes, kind of patrolling that area for traffic. Again, we're going to try to do a diagonal type of one-way around City Park. Again, traffic flow, try to keep it easy, try to keep people diagoned, and we figure we can get more cars parked that way. Again, a big concern for us is federal. We don't want to block streets off, but with the vendors coming in and unloading and loading, that outside lane always gets blocked off. Whether we have officers there or not, it's just a problem that we have for day in the park. It's going to be the same problem for this. We will try to get people in and out of there as soon as possible to try to keep both of those lanes open, but just because of the nature of the beast, it will get blocked off for a certain amount of time while the vendors are loading and unloading. We will have a tent out front, so we will have some medical personnel out there for that. Amy will be in charge of that, like I said. We will have some staff members from the hospital that are going to come staff it as far as nurses and that thing. So really, the plan there is more of an informational tent and really trying to keep some people out of the ER. So really, the hospital's goal is to, little minor scrapes, bruises, you know, boo-boos, that kind of thing, will go to this tent and hopefully kind of clear out the ER for those four days. We will have the command trailer out there, so we will have some Gatorade, water, things of that nature. We will have a dispatcher that will man that the whole time, and then myself or Captain Byerly or Lieutenant Romero will also be in that area to take care of that. We'll also have a tent at 422 East Main, and it'll be a little bit of a smaller tent, again, informational. We'll have that manned with a dispatcher as well, with a radio, just for help or information type purposes. Food, one thing that we've decided to do at the police department, and we've opened it up to all city staff, myself and Captain Byerly will be out back, and we'll be manning two barbecuers, and we'll be flipping burgers and cooking hot dogs and keeping that going. Our biggest thing with that is for those four days, our guys working 12-hour shifts, there's no way that they're going to be able to get down to McDonald's or wherever to go grab a bite to eat. This way, they can come back to the police department, grab a hamburger, grab a hot dog, sit in the squad room for a little bit in an air-conditioned area and relax for 30 minutes before they have to go back out for another four-hour shift. We've extended that to the other city employees, so everyone is invited to come and partake in that. And like I told Kyle, I can cook a pretty mean hamburger, so it'll be pretty good. That way, we can keep people out on the street and, again, off the street, in traffic and out of the restaurants and things of that nature. So that's kind of our plan for right now. We've been meeting every two weeks in the police department for the last month to make sure that we have everything ready, and I feel that we are very prepared for anything that comes up. Aside from cellphone towers going down, there's not a whole lot we can do with that. Another concern for us is if we have a tent city, you know, and these people are from out of town, it's really hard during an emergency. Even our own local community members get really tongue-tied, and they don't know where they're at a lot of times, the adrenaline dump. And so for these people from Bavaria, Germany, how are they going to tell us that they're in the fourth tent down, having a medical issue or a domestic violence issue or something like that? So we will try to prepare as best we can, and I think that we've done that, and then the rest of it will just do what we do and respond to emergencies. And the other big thing that I'd really like to stress is that, one of my command directives for our guys is that we are really going to go into a customer service mode for those four days. We will not be out there arresting people for, you know, smaller misdemeanor warrants and things of that nature. We will really try to be more customer service-based and really be there for more information, traffic flow, things of that nature, and try to have everybody have a positive experience.
Tim?
Chief, do we have any thoughts as to places where people can park?
We have been...
Is that a Public Works Director thing?
Well, we've been both kind of toying with that, so we'll, I'll have Kyle do his presentation, and then we'll...
Perfect. We'll play to answer your question. Thank you, Courtney. Thank you, Chief. Okay, from an operations standpoint, there are four main things that we are trying to focus on as far as service delivery to our citizens, service delivery to those that are coming to visit with us. And very similar to what the chief was mentioning, transportation is a big one. We're less from a traffic standpoint because these guys are trained, they know how to move traffic when there's an accident or when there's severe congestion. But from our standpoint, we still worry about transportation, condition of roads, and a few other things of that nature. So when we think about transportation, we worry about getting people to and from places. Now, you may remember that Inga came and mentioned that she had a trolley option available. Well, unfortunately, that has not been able to come to fruition. She worked very hard on that, she and her husband, but due to some insurance problems, and, not problems, but insurance costs, and then challenges in just covering the cost of bringing the trolleys in, they had to back out of that option. However, we do have a backup, and we've been able to pivot from that as a city fairly easily. And working with WRTA, they had kept aside two buses for us, and we're going to meet tomorrow with Gary Micho to go over a service proposal that will basically be Riverton-specific and will provide shuttle service for those that travel to our town, park their RV or park somewhere and need to get to Walmart, need to get to City Park with all the events that are going on, or come from the rendezvous site where they're staying. So we will be working on getting Riverton-specific shuttle service over the weekend with WRTA. And Mr. Micho is very positive about that. We just need to come up with hours of operation and then the cost for it. And speaking of City Park, there will be increased activity, Dark in the Park's going to be going on. It's a great place. It's a central place for people to congregate and enjoy the weekend before the actual event. And one thing that we've thought about and worked through is parking around City Park. Those are narrow streets, and we know City Park doesn't provide a lot of parking, especially if we're going to have the 10,000 to 10,000 people coming, right? It'll be more than 10 people. So one thing we've thought about is one-way traffic around the park itself, and being able to block off one lane to allow for that extra parking, and hopefully to help facilitate some of these vendors coming from their locations, setting up and then leaving. One thing that we have to think about is how do we designate parking around City Park if we do one-way traffic? My team is working through designating those stalls, whether they're parallel or whether they're diagonal. It will really depend on a few variables. First and foremost is we have a number of residents around that park, and these residents park on the street out of necessity. And so we want to work with those residents and make sure that we're not kicking them out of their normal parking space, and if we do, we want to communicate to them a second option. We're also ordering signs and making sure we have the appropriate traffic control to restrict left-hand turns coming into the park or into the streets surrounding the park, and really controlling traffic so it's a right-hand in and then a right-hand out. We want to avoid those lefts as much as possible. So that's one thing that we're trying to do to help accommodate traffic and help accommodate parking. Another thing that we're thinking through, and we don't have this option as far as city equipment, and my staff is currently looking to vendors to see if we can secure a variable message board. What's a variable message board? It's one of those big signs at the front of a construction project that flashes information. One thing we don't want to have is confusion as people are coming into our town, the day trippers, and then also those that are spending the weekend. And if we can direct travelers coming in to one central point for information, I think it'll be safer, it'll avoid people trying to look for directional signs and then potentially get into a fender bender. So if we can secure variable message boards, we're going to place them at the entrances to town and then reference all traffic to City Hall, to this information tent that the chief mentioned. And that way, we can provide information about parking, information about amenities, information about activities. So that's something we hope to get secured, but we're not sure if we can get one rented during the event. We mentioned parking. Parking is a challenge, first and foremost because we don't know how many people are going to be driving in, we have an estimate, and two, as far as the city goes, we can only control public property. We do know that there are some private entities that are renting out spaces in their parking lots. CWC is one of them, who will be charging people to park there. But outside of that, when we think of the large parking areas around town, City Hall will be able to provide some relief. Walmart, I know welcomes parking. But parking's a challenge. We will welcome people to park in our public spaces, but we're trying to coordinate and receive information from private property owners who will want to open up their lots for parking. However, we've thought through, all right, if we get a lot of people coming into town, we have congestion with RVs that don't know where to go, we have congestion from just normal vehicles that don't know where to go, we can send people to the Saban Complex for parking and help shuttle them into the central points of town. We can do the same with the airport property. There's a large field where the industrial park is located, and we can send people there should we have to. And as a last resort, 6th East, as it heads into the fair, we can restrict that and allow some parking, very similar to how that road is restricted during the fair. So those are some last options that we can mobilize quick and make sure we have a place for these vehicles to go. The next thing to talk about for transportation is the airport. People aren't just driving into our town to view this eclipse, they're also flying in. From a commercial standpoint, I can report that bookings are very well right now, are going very good, I should say. In fact, revenues against our projections from Denver Air Connection are 43% above projections. People are flying in. I just did a quick search before coming up here, and Great Lakes is booked out on some of their flights. So luckily, our commercial airport is being used for this event, and we encourage people that if you want to fly in, if you want grandma to come in, go to flyriverton.com. Outside of the commercial traffic, there's a lot of general aviation traffic going to fly in. Now, we have limited parking at our airport. We have 30 tie-down spaces. To help accommodate the extra traffic from Hunt Field and to help accommodate the extra traffic for the event, we will be mowing an area next to our apron and allowing tie-downs for folks that want to park their aircraft or stay overnight. And we are making sure that our FBO provides enough fuel during the event and has enough on hand to help accommodate these travelers from a general aviation standpoint. All right, that covers transportation, and that was a long one, so we can get moving. The next concern we have is solid waste. With excess people, you have excess trash, especially from visitors. You think they're going to be going through a lot of bottles of water, they're going to be going through a lot of fast food and other items like that, which produce waste. So how are we going to make sure we accommodate that waste and help keep Riverton clean? The last thing we want is litter all over our town when we have a bunch of visitors. So from our department standpoint, we're going to be setting out extra dumpsters throughout the town. And this map I have set up, this is something Ms. Wilhelm was able to work on. It's a KMZ attachment that anyone can download to their Google Earth file. Now, this is preliminary as of right now, but it is showing our town and some of the amenities that will be spread throughout the town. So if you notice, down at the ballfields, this little icon shows that we're going to have extra dumpster and receptacle placed there, excuse me. This little yellow line is a preliminary projection of where the shuttle will go. This isn't final. We're also showing where we can accommodate a few other services, but I want to highlight the garbage right now. We will be placing more dumpsters around town in public spaces where we expect people to be so they can throw their stuff away. And Greg is currently painting them a nice green color so they don't look as rusted and in poor shape. We have 20 of those reserved. We can put more into service if we have to. We also are communicating with our commercial accounts that if they need extra service, they need to get in touch with the city and make sure they set that up. So for example, the restaurants, the grocery stores, anyone who's bringing in a lot of commodities in preparation for this event is going to also be bringing in a lot of shipping material that needs to be discarded. And if these property owners, the business owners, need an extra collection day, we will accommodate that. In fact, we can accommodate two dumps if they need during one day. So we are communicating with the business community so that their alleys, their dumpsters, don't get overwhelmed as they're bringing in the commodities to prepare for this event. One nice thing is Fremont County Solid Waste Disposal District is staying open during the weekend. Typically, they are closed Sunday and Monday. Well, the event's Monday, and a lot of the events going on leading up to the eclipse are happening over the weekend. And so they have agreed to be fully staffed over the weekend and keep their transfer stations and landfills open. What that will do for us is we can collect this trash in the extra public dumpster locations and get it to the baler or the landfill and not have it just accumulate and build over these three are dumpsters. So we will have staff working the weekend running garbage trucks that will handle these dumpsters, and then also the extra receptacles that will be in City Park for the Dark in the Park. Our next concern is human waste. The city had originally reserved 15 porta-potties to put through town. I just recently was able to up that to 22 with Carol Septic. They are providing us these porta-potties, and we've selected locations where we're thinking people will congregate and need to have bathroom services. And if we use our map, it's kind of nice because you can see exactly at Sunset Park, there'll be extra dumpsters, extra porta-potties in a specific location. The way we've appropriated the 22, we will have six at City Park, two at City Hall, three at 422 East Main, three at the airport, two at J.C. Park, two at Teeter Park, two at Sunset Park, and two at the intersection of the Rails to Trails and the River Walk. So we're working on making sure we provide those porta-potties where people will be congregating. Another thing we're doing is making sure that we have RV dump locations identified and available. We have one at the wastewater treatment plant, there is one at Buggy Bath, but that is the only commercial property that allows RV dumps. So what we've done is temporarily installed an RV dump on the west side of town up by the airport. That was installed last week, and we're doing a pull-out right now so that folks don't have to wait in line, getting into either the Buggy Bath or the wastewater treatment plant. They can head up to the west side of town, especially if they're already there, dump their RV and get on their way. The last thing we're very much aware of and concerned about is beautification and recovery. Our streets crews will be cleaning our town leading up to the event. That includes street sweeping, that includes any beautification efforts. They will work with the parks crews to make sure that we trim trees, we clean up the planters downtown, and spruce up our public spaces as much as possible. During the event, streets crews will be coming in each day of the weekend at 4:00 a.m. to empty the decorative bins along Main Street and then also provide street sweeping. So we hope that every day as people are getting up, our town looks nice for them. Our parks crews also will be working the weekend, making sure that they participate and help with Dark in the Park, and then also that they work at each of the parks, cleaning bathrooms, patrolling trash and litter. That's what we're doing. That rounds out the four goals that we have, but there is some miscellaneous information I wanted to provide you. I keep getting questions about, "How are all these people going to affect our water treatment plant? How are they all going to affect our wastewater plant?" Fortunately, we're in good shape. Our treatment plant can handle 3.7 million gallons per day. On an average, our current demand is about 3.4 million gallons a day. So if during... this event, we see an increased demand, what we'll plan on doing is bring our wells online to replenish our reservoirs. Our wells can produce 5.7 million gallons a day. Our reservoirs can have 7 million gallons in reserves. And so if our treatment plant can't keep up with the demand, we'll kick on the wells and make sure our reservoirs are full so that water can be provided. Now, there's only so many connections in town, so there's fixed points where people will get water. So we're not too concerned about it, but if we're going through water faster than what we do on an average day, we can cover it. Similarly, the wastewater treatment plant, we have capacity there. We will be putting our oxidation ditch, our second oxidation ditch, online and our second clarifier online. It is currently online to handle the floodwaters we did, that we experienced during the spring. Our treatment plant is designed for 4.9 million gallons a day. On average, we go about 2 million a day. We think we'll probably get another million gallons of flow during the event. And so that oxidation ditch and to help explain that, that's where all our bugs are that treat the wastewater, will be online to help process it and make sure we're handling that wastewater and treating it so it's not an impact on the environment. That's what I've got. If you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But that's really what our crews have been focused on and how we're trying to help accommodate the visitors that are coming into town.
Thank you, Kyle and Sean, for your efforts to get this all pulled together. And we're really trying hard to make this an event that the people who come to Riverton can enjoy, and with the idea in mind that maybe they'll want to come back sometime and spend some more time with us, or stick around for a while after the eclipse and see some of the things that are around Riverton and Wind River country. Anybody, any questions about the preparation so far? Tim?
I'm sorry, I just thought of this. It was a random thought. I know sometimes you go into some towns and they have an AM radio station for tourist information. Is that something that we could do at all here? Has that been considered?
Your Honor, that's something we can look into. We haven't really discussed having the AM station city-centric, but it looks like Councilman Peterson has a comment.
In one of our early meetings, the guy that does the morning buzz, John, he had talked about doing that, and Cody Beers had brought that up. And I think that's something they're thinking about doing, is they're talking about dedicating one station that they have over there in their network as just a information continuous loop of stuff like that. Now, I don't know if that is still something they're looking at. That may be something worth following up with on him, find out if they're still going to do it. But I know that was something that was talked about early in the planning process.
Have we gotten, I mean, is there any possibility of parking at Kmart as well, at the old Kmart building?
Your Honor, the challenge with Kmart is that it is private property. I know that staff has reached out to Kmart to see if they would allow people to park in their open space. One thing they're concerned about is regulated, because they don't have someone here, and then also the cleanup. That's the information we have. Whether or not they will block it off, we're not sure at this time. But I do know that they are concerned about people parking there and then leaving that property worse than what it is currently.
How about the old modelers park?
Your Honor, the modelers park, I believe, is planning on doing an event, a fly-in during that eclipse weekend. So they will be allowing people to come in and out, whether there'll be a lot of excess parking. I can't say that at this time. Your Honor, I did have another comment, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
I also get a lot of questions about whether or not we can turn the lights off in town. And in working with Rocky Mountain Power, they have said, no, we cannot turn our streetlights off. It's too much of a challenge for them. Those streetlights are operated on a photocell, so when it gets dark, they automatically kick on. And for them to kill those lights, they actually have to kill some circuits, and they don't want to go through that hardship. It's too burdensome for them to do that. We do have control of the decorative lights running through City Park and on South Federal and Main Street. We could turn those lights off if the demand was there. I've talked to Greg about that. Unfortunately, it's a fairly cumbersome process. It's possible, but we've got to just kill a bunch of switches to do that. So that's a possibility. I would encourage people that are looking for photo opportunities or the best eclipse viewing location. Downtown City of Riverton might not be the best spot to take some photos. They should go to the high ground, go to some bluffs. And so I would encourage people that are worried about light pollution, maybe not to be in the center of town, because we can't make sure that those lights will turn off during the event.
Sean?
Courtney, people are watching. I just got a text from somebody, and they want to know, what about emergency vehicles getting around? Is there going to be some kind of a avenue? I don't know if that's a U thing or a chief thing, but my brother-in-law's a paramedic, and he asked, what about the ambulances? Are they going to try to get from A to B?
Your Honor, that's going to be one of our biggest challenges. We won't know until we know if we have 10,000 people or 50,000 people.
Okay. I know it's been brought up several times in conversation, so if we put it out there that we are thinking about it, I think that'll ease some people's concerns.
Your Honor, I can tell you that I was a police officer in Dallas, Texas for four years. Even during rush hour traffic, emergency vehicles still made it through when the freeways were a complete parking lot. So I'm sure we'll get it figured out.
I have no doubts.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Butterfield, you had mentioned that we're going to put some extra three-yard dumpsters around at different locations. Is that something that would be available to business locations also that are probably going to be misused for dumping trash?
So...
As opposed to you having to come three times a day to a location or something like that?
So what we're planning on doing is putting those excess dumpsters in the public locations for private property. We're hoping to be able to accommodate that through our current service that we provide. If a business owner needs an extra dumpster, that does come with a fee, because we have to pay the tipping fee involved with that extra dumpster. So it is available, but we're planning right now to use the fee structure that's in place for extra service for those commercial properties.
So I can just take my trash to City Park and do it there, or?
No comment.
We're going to take ours to Bailey, so go ahead.
Because, I mean, you know, most of the businesses, me included, have enough dumpsters for the normal business activity that we're going to have. And again, we're hoping that that's going to be considerably above that. The trick becomes, you know, I don't know how many times your truck can show up in a day, but I mean, we're getting twice a week dumps now, and I mean, we may need daily dumps or something. And I don't know if we have enough time and energy to do that. And so to me, it would be maybe easier to plant some extra dumpsters around just so that we don't have to be making a route every single day to keep up. But I don't know.
Your Honor, one of the challenges we have is making sure we're equitable and fair to all business owners. When we started looking at locations to place these extra dumpsters, it was a challenge to say, well, this private property owner should get some extra dumpsters, but this one can't. And that's where we drew the line of saying, we just need to keep it in the public space. And then those businesses that are bringing extra commodities in, we'll try and handle that through the system we have right now by extra dumps or extra receptacles. But that's really where we had a hard time drawing that line of which property owners deserve it. Does Walmart deserve more because they're going to have more people, more than the trailhead? It was challenging, and we do have a fixed amount of dumpsters we can set out there. So that's where we shied away from private property and just stuck with
With regards to our Bavarian visitors, this guy was focused on being on the top of Crowheart Butte. And so he had tried, we'd given him a couple of different telephone numbers and out on the reservation so that he could call and try to find out what he needed to do there, and we didn't know. And he wasn't able to make those connections very well. So I did get in touch with the tribal secretary for the Shoshone tribe, and she had it all laid out. And so anybody who wants to go out on tribal land around Riverton or on the reservation can do so if they buy a tribal trespass permit. So all they have to do is buy a fishing license, and they're fixed. Okay?
And it can be one day.
Could be a one-day license. The trick is, every person has to have a license. So if you've got six in your family, you've got to buy six licenses. So they don't have a family permit thing. But, and even if that's a babe in arms, apparently that's still a person. So that's the way you do it. But you can get access to tribal lands by going to the game and fish on the reservation and buying a fishing license.
Your Honor, you can buy a fishing license here locally?
Yes, I think you could. You could like it Rocky Mountain Sporting Goods?
Right.
You can buy a tribal fishing license there. Okay? So there are a number of retail outlets for that. Yeah. Okay? Anything else we need to talk about or be concerned about here? Okay, let's move on to council committee reports and council members' roundtable. Ms. Gibbon?
I don't have anything at this time, Your Honor.
Okay, Ms. Peterson?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Larson?
Yeah, I just want to compliment the air service that you've worked so hard on. I flew to Denver, and from New York, I came back to Denver and flew in. And both times, it is so slick and so neat. And I can't remember the councilman's name that comes to mind, but it is so good not to drive two and a half hours from Casper to Riverton. And the price is outstanding. But the service, there was, it got a little bumpy, up he went, and it was smooth and quick and convenient. And anybody that doesn't use the present Riverton air service is just shorting themselves. They really are. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Larson?
Mr. Bailey? I guess I would also reflect Mr. Larson's comments, and I've had exceptional, exceptionally good experience with using the connections out of Riverton to Denver. And I guess it was very disappointing to me that we were not assisted more thoroughly from the other communities in our county in helping us with the minimum revenue guarantee. And so I guess that was disappointing, but the air service is wonderful. And so I hope the members of the community continue to use it and make it a viable thing that we can keep continuing to offer through the airport. And so I guess, the other thing is, I guess, I was very concerned when I read an article last Wednesday in the Riverton Ranger that insinuated that we sort of just accidentally found a million dollars laying around somewhere at the end of the year in our budget. And they did state some relatively reliable facts that I think they got from our printout that we distributed. But I guess, I think the public needs to understand that, you know, we have reserves in all of those accounts, and that basically is the money that we don't spend on expenses, ends up being left over, and that's called reserves, that are specifically designed to be used for additional capital projects, which is what North Federal is. And so, again, I got the impression when I first read the article that, you know, we just sort of accidentally found this. Well, we didn't. This was planned, and we planned to have reserves left over so that we had money to do these capital projects that need to be done on a continuous basis. And we've come up with, you know, we are working on a long-term capital expenditure plan so that we have an idea of what we need to have money to spend to use for matching grants for city and water and sewer and all of those kind of things. And then, of course, the general fund budget also had some funds that they said, we had $345,000 left, which if you add the airport expenditures into that, we actually went backwards by $70,000. So again, I think I would appreciate it if they would clarify that so that the public would understand that we have specific uses outlined for those funds that were not expended for the year. You know, I think we need to plan for those things, just like we all at our house need to have a contingency fund in case our water heater goes out or our refrigerator dies. We just have a lot bigger water heaters and refrigerators to worry about. So again, that's a little concerning to me, that people are misled to thinking that we just accidentally found that laying around in a drawer or something. So that's not true. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Hancock, have you got anything for us?
How do you follow that?
I'm sorry, it's still making me laugh. No, I don't.
Well, that was dramatic.
Mr. Godey, how about yourself?
The only thing I wanted to, and maybe Courtney, you might be addressing this in your report, but a couple of weeks ago, we talked about a work-study session on follow-up to the beautification condition of properties issue. And I'm just curious if that might be coming soon or planned soon. So I just don't want that to be trickled off and forgotten. So I just wanted to bring it back around, that I'd certainly be willing, if others on council would be willing, to work through a work session to look at some of the issues regarding ordinances, regarding property condition, things like that that came up.
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I did send something out, I believe, about two or three weeks ago.
You did.
I did not hear from any council member whether they would like that to come forward to a work session. We would be happy to plan that. I do think, after speaking with Mrs. Albright, that we do have some issues.
Yeah.
That we can clean up, or we can clarify, or we can become more efficient with. We would be happy to entertain that at a work session.
Sure. Sure, that'd be great. Let's have that as a work session. I don't know if you've got anything for next week or not?
No, Your Honor, I was going to ask for a week's reprieve.
Okay. And if you had a, so I guess we could, then we're into eclipse?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so maybe, I don't know, maybe we could do, typically, we haven't had a work session on the fourth Tuesday.
Might be okay.
Or the second one of September.
Or the second Tuesday in September.
That would give us plenty of time.
Okay. I'm sure there is some prep that we would like to do in order to get ready for that. So, well, you guys figure out when you can do it, and we'll get it on the calendar. Okay? But that would be a great work session.
Your Honor?
Fourth Tuesday's going to be rough.
Four Tuesdays?
The fourth Tuesday would be rough. That's going to be the day after the eclipse.
It would be. It would be.
I think everybody's just going to want to sit down and take their shoes off at that point.
See, so, okay, go ahead.
Are we going to have, Courtney, have you planned anything on a recount of what occurred? How, you know, an address on the activity afterwards?
Of the eclipse, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, scorecard, you know?
Debriefing?
Oh, I understand.
How we did, what we did, did we, did the plans fall? Did, what, you know?
What could we learn for the next eclipse in 2045?
We can leave great notes for the next.
No, 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 no. Activities generate information. Information is utilized in improving, and not only improving, but for things that are unforeseen. And just because we won't have an eclipse, there might be other events.
Absolutely. Yes, we will certainly bring that forward.
I mean, it would demonstrate to us, this is central Wyoming. We are a shopping center for most of this area. And for, you know, if somebody come in and said, you know, what type of activity? And for, you know, if somebody come in and said, you know, what type of activities can you support? What can you do? And you go, walla, here it is.
Yes. We'd be happy to.
Thank you.
City Administrators Report?
Your Honor, I have none other than begging your forgiveness on asking for next Tuesday off. I believe staff is getting very slammed. Temporary merchant permit inquiries are getting huge.
Good.
Not to mention Dark in the Park. And we're just getting a lot of different, Megan's busy a lot. So if we could hold off and not do anything that Tuesday, that would help staff tremendously.
It's fine. We don't have anything scheduled, I guess, that we have to deal with, so.
No.
Get next week off, guys.
Nice, nice.
Okay, everybody thinks that's nice. Is that it, Courtney?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have, I just have one thing to talk about, or maybe more. The first thing is West Nile virus. We do have a positive West Nile virus in our Riverton trap sites. And so we will be going to fogging twice a week. Do we start that this week, Kyle?
Yes, the double, Your Honor, sorry, the double fogging will start tomorrow.
Okay, so tomorrow, we'll start double fogging. Actually, the mosquitoes have not been very bad this year, and that kind of fits with the pattern that we have seen in Fremont County previously where we've had heavy flood events. It seems that the, all the great breeding sites for mosquitoes are covered up with water. And so the mosquitoes wind up being washed down into Boyson Reservoir, and those folks that go to Boyson Reservoir for recreational purposes understand how terrible it is out there. But Riverton and Lander don't have a terrible mosquito problem this year. But what's interesting is, is that well over half of the mosquitoes that we're getting in traps in the City of Riverton are Culex tarsalis, which is the mosquito that transmits West Nile virus. So the fact that you can go outside and hang around in the dark and not get chewed on and driven inside is not any, is not any safety factor. We still need to be careful about that. You know, remember that Culex tarsalis is a sneaky biter. So if you are outside, active, moving around, he's going to leave you alone. But if you are sitting out on the front porch, enjoying the cool evening breeze as it comes in, that mosquito will come in and work on you on the back of your neck or your leg, your arm. And this time of year, it's pretty warm, and so people got shorts on, tank tops and that type of thing. And so plenty of opportunity to get bit. And so we do have West Nile virus shown to be in our population. It's kind of interesting, you can't, you can't, the fact that you go out and test mosquitoes and you don't get a hit doesn't mean that West Nile virus isn't there, just means we didn't find it. If, on the other hand, you do get a hit on West Nile virus, that tells you that it is there. There's no false positive there, so. So we do have that in our population and mosquitoes, and so we do need to exercise some extra caution as we go about our daily activities. And then after you come in at night, kind of do a check room by room, and the mosquitoes will be hanging around where the lights are, and you can see them on the ceiling, and kind of clean them up before you go to bed with a fly spawner. Okay? Means you need, you know, good screens in the doors and the windows if you leave those open at night, that type of thing. Okay? We hope to avoid any human cases of West Nile virus. Unfortunately, we generally detect West Nile virus in the mosquito population at about the same time we detect it in the human population. So somebody's probably already been bit. But we're going to do our part and try to crank up the fogging so that we get better suppression of the adult mosquitoes. The next item in business is an executive session for personnel. The chair would entertain a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of personnel considering the appointment, employment, right to practice, dismissal, complaints or charges against a public officer, professional person, or employee in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4-405A2, and for the purpose of considering offers, tendering wages, salaries, benefits, or terms of employment during negotiations in accordance with Wyoming Statute 16-4-405A10.
That's a move that we moved to executive session, Your Honor.
Second.
That was a tie.
I think it was a three-way tie.
Sean? Okay, all right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're both aye, and we stand convened at 8:30.